Okay, this is a planning meeting, August 21st, 2024. As a preliminary matter, this is Woody Knight, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond with the affirmative. Pete Pecos?
Hello.
Larry Murphy?
Here.
Scott Kinter?
I can hear you.
And Steve Manjion?
Here.
Very good. Town staff, when I call your name, please respond with the affirmative. Kristen Grubbs?
Yes.
Anticipated speakers present as on the agenda, please respond with the affirmative. Damon Jesperson, Whiffle Tree Works?
Present.
Very good. Good evening, this is August 21st, 2024, open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistently with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which extends the Governor's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law until March 31st, 2025. This order suspends the requirement of the Open Meeting Law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website, in which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID 832-7141-3056, passcode 108790, or by calling 1-929-205-6099US and entering the meeting ID number and passcode when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that all attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable Channel 9 on Zoom and at www.tncTV.org, and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and, if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called. Meeting business ground rules. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, please permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer or your phone when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds, earphones, with tablets, or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to share screen in your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. Public comment, there will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions as follows. I will see questions and comments through the Zoom Raise Hand function. Video conference participants, to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure that your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the More function next to your name. Telephone participants, to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting, hit star 9 on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the Raise Hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address, and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those in the Raise Hand column and again afford the participant applicant an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record. And again, the participant applicant representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if issues raised have not yet been addressed. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Okay. Before we start with the agenda, I just want to say that our next meeting will be September 18th. We decided that at a previous meeting and due to the Labor Day holiday and September 11th, September 18th works best for the board. Okay, we have a submission from Damon Jesperson. Whiffle Tree Works, Level 2 Site Plan Review Submission for Nonprofit Educational Organization at One Marsh Meadow. Damon, would you like to give a description of your or a presentation of what you want to do?
I feel like the full presentation will take place at the public hearing, but the application is to expand the parking around the barn at One Marsh Meadow Lane to allow handicap access and better parking access for those using the facility.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions from the board? I'll start with Pete.
No questions, thank you.
Larry?
No, I don't have any questions.
Scott? Scott's muted, but I saw him say, "I have no questions." And Steve, how do you feel?
No questions at this time, though certainly Damon mentioned parking. Being a resident of Plum Island, my ears always perk up over that issue. But that'll be for another day.
Okay, so on this, we have to have a vote to set the public hearing date for Site Plan Review in public hearing of Whiffle Tree at One Marsh Meadow. I entertain a motion.
Woody, just to point a procedure, don't we first have to vote to accept the application?
Oh, excuse me, yes. I've backtracked, yes, sorry. I would entertain a motion to accept the application.
I'll still move.
Second?
Second? Okay, roll call vote. Pete?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And Steve, how do you feel?
Yes.
And I, Woody, chair also vote yes. Okay. I entertain a motion to set the public hearing date for September 18th, our next meeting?
I'll move to set the public hearing date for September 19th at 7:15 PM.
Okay, it would be the 18th, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, the 18th, you're right.
Yep. Okay, second?
Second.
Very good. Roll call vote, Pete?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And Steve, how do you feel?
I would vote yes if I were voting.
Very good, and the chair votes yes as well. So Damon, we'll see you on the 18th for a public hearing, opening on the public hearing.
Thank you very much for your time, we'll see you then.
All right, very good, have a good night.
Woody, I just want to confirm it's on with the board like that hearing to be on Zoom? I'm assuming.
Yes. And on Zoom, yes.
I just want to make sure because I don't think the vote said specifically Zoom, but that's our practice, so that makes sense.
It didn't, would you like me to restate the motion?
Sure, just for clarity, why don't we do that?
All right, well, I'll move that the previously voted September 18th public hearing be via Zoom.
Second.
Great.
Very good, roll call vote again. Pete?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And Steve, how do you feel?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, Damon, we'll see you on Zoom, September 18th. Have a good evening. Okay, next order of business is old business, we don't have any old business tonight. New business, we don't have any new business tonight. Okay. Next thing on the agenda, Planning Board Administration/Discussion. Rules Regarding Agendas and Deadlines for Submissions of Applicants and Materials. We adopted this, we adopted a do you have that to share, Kristen? We adopted this in on March 24th, 2021, and we're just bringing it up as a reminder that this is how we're going to operate business and just wanted to refresh the board on what we did.
Sorry.
It would make life easier for us as a board to get the information in a timely fashion and for Kristen as well to get the information formatted so that it could be passed on to the board members via email, so that way we're not getting last minute emails on Monday and Tuesday for things that are on the agenda. Does anyone recall doing this in the past?
Yes, indeed.
Yes.
Okay. So I don't know if this got emailed out to everyone or not, but here it is and I'll read through it real quick. The planning board shall meet regularly on the first and third Wednesday of every month. Additional meetings may be called by the chair and scheduled as needed with proper posting of the agenda in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. Meetings may be scheduled or canceled. Preparation of Agenda for Planning Board Meetings. The agenda for each Planning Board meeting shall be prepared by the Planning Director after conferring with the Chair. Agenda items suggested by others members of the board may be included on the agenda with the Chair's approval. The agenda will close at 12:00 PM, seven calendar days before a regular bi-monthly meeting of the board or no less than three days before any other meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays. And no changes to the agenda shall take place thereafter, except as follows. Any matter coming to the attention of the Planning Director or a member of the board after the above stated closing time and considered to be an emergency matter may be included on the agenda. The Chair will be notified of any such changes. Consideration on matters of non-emergency nature may be allowed at the discretion of the Chair if permitted under the Open Meeting Law, but may be tabled until the next regular meeting. Submission Deadlines. New applications, drafts of new applications to be filed with the Planning Board shall be submitted to the Planning Director for review for compliance with submission requirements no less than two weeks prior to the anticipated filing date. Applications shall be filed at a regularly scheduled Planning Board meeting. All other materials, any materials to be considered by the Planning Board at a regularly scheduled meeting shall be submitted to the Planning Director in both hard copy and electronic format no less than seven calendar days prior to the meeting date, at which the materials will be discussed. This includes revised documents for the continued public hearings. And that was adopted by unanimous vote of the Planning Board on the 24th day of March, 2021, Planning Board Town in Newbury. So I just wanted to remind everyone that we put that policy into place and that we're going to go by it. And Kristen will remind the applicants as they as time goes on here that this is how we're going to conduct business.
Well, I would just ask I'm a new board member, certainly wasn't even thinking about the planning board back in 21, but we put this in place March 21, and are we, or we have, have we been consistently adhering to the policy?
Off and on, I think at times we were very very accommodating to people turning information in late. But I find that personally, my belief is that getting for board members and for myself anyways, getting information on Monday and Tuesday and then putting Kristen in the position of having to get them into emails and get the information out to us and then for us to digest the information hours before or the day before, planning board meeting is unfair to the fellow board members by following this guideline. We'd have the materials well in advance and as a board and as board members, we'd be more prepared and well informed for our meetings. If anyone else has any comments, please.
I appreciate that, and I agree, but you know, as a board, you know, it's the always the goal to be consistent, you know, with the adherence to policies. And, you know, of course, you know, we were giving and, you know, we're representing the town, so I mean, there's a little bit of a how flexible do you want to be? I completely agree with you with respect to you know, time that we need, you know, as a board because we are, for the most part, volunteers. So when we get things on Monday or Tuesday or a Wednesday night meeting, you know, sometimes, you know, it puts us in a difficult spot, you know, if we have an outside or another commitment to really represent the town in the best way possible, which is to provide the time and the effort to review, you know, what's coming up before the board to put us and the town in the best position to get us to the best place. So I guess my question just goes back to you, Woody. We have this policy in effect since March of 21. What are we, what are we looking for? Are we looking for just more consistency at following the policy? Or are we looking at, you know, strict adherence to the policy? I mean, what's the, what are we, what are we after?
Could I kick in here?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so Scott, you know, in the past, we've really tried to we tried to stick to guidelines and sometimes applicants can push guidelines and in an attempt to facilitate applications, sometimes things can, you know, get pushed in a way that they shouldn't, so the intention from when this was put into place was to be fair, not only to the board, but excuse me, there's a dog bark in the background, but to the applicants themselves, so there were guidelines, so they knew what to do and when they should be responsible to get information in so that the board can do what it's needed to do. So this is basically just to kind of refresh everybody to where we want to be. If we weren't always there, you know, we weren't always there, but going forward, I think this is where the intent is of this, this position. If that makes
Makes sense, a refresh. Okay, thank you for that.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay, and then
Woody, can I just add one comment too?
Yes, go ahead.
Which is, I, as some of you know, I started my involvement in Newbury Planning, serving on the Planning Board at a time when I did work full time. I, my job at the time had a lot of night meetings, so I think the when I read this policy through, I was appreciative that it does intend, as you just described, Woody, to give the board time to review the materials. Ideally, and for me, it was really critical to get the materials before the weekend because that was the time I had to review things. So I think, you know, just the timeline this lays out, I think is fair to the process, you know, it's, it's you know, it's a week in advance and then that'll give the staff time to get the information together, get the agenda, and get the information out to the Planning Board and to the public. You know, when new applications come in, we'll be putting, you know, uploading materials on the town website. So it really does kind of, I think, benefit everybody to strive for this. That said, there are times and reasons why things come in later and, you know, we'll certainly do our best as the staff and to be reasonable about accepting things when there's a good reason that it came in late and when it's important for the agenda, so my perspective on that.
Well, I have a different perspective. And I guess the board appreciates or would appreciate just a consistent approach across the board, week after week, you know, month after month. March of 21, you know, is, feels like a generation ago, but I would say that I think the board would rely on you and the board members could speak as well to, you know, speak up, let us know when you feel it's becoming a little bit challenging or it's becoming a little inconsistent. And then, you know, we can also at any time revisit and make sure we're, you know, on the same page.
Very good, Steve, you have your hand raised, would you like to say something?
Yes, when Kristen mentioned the public, my ears went up again too, and I'm thinking to do a paraphrase of Kristen's situation, let's say a member of the public and admittedly, public interest comes and goes on projects, but let's say a member of the public was interested in something and they expected it to be in a week ahead of time because the following Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, they were going to be out of town and unable to review a document coming in late. It seems to me that we really do need to be consistent about having plans come in according to schedule so that the public can be as informed as they need to be or want to be. And I'm wondering what would happen if something didn't come in till Tuesday for a Wednesday meeting and, you know, the public was unaware of this because when they went to bed Tuesday night, shall we say, there was nothing up to look at, so they didn't bother looking to see what was going to be on the agenda for the following week because it should have been posted and it wasn't.
And Yep, well, the agenda has always been posted in a timely fashion, it has to be, but the information for the board and the information for the public that's going to be on a public hearing or whatever it may be, it should be consistent and there should be there should be time to have it posted on the website and for everyone to digest it, so.
Right, and I misspoke when I used the word agenda, I was thinking more about the documents being uploaded or reviewed. Thank you, Woody.
Yep, thank you, Steve. All right, anyone else have anything to say on that matter or can we move on? Move on? All right. Liaison reports. And we have the ZBA. Larry?
Yeah, the ZBA has not met since our last meeting and they're meeting on the 19th of September, and I don't know what's going to be on the agenda, so I really have nothing to report at this time.
Then Select Board, do we have a, Kristen, do you have anything on the Select Board?
Sure, I attended the Select Board meeting last night primarily for the public hearing that was opening regarding the property at 34 Central Street, which had notified the town Select Board, Planning Board, Conservation Commission of the intent to withdraw the property from the Chapter 61A Agricultural Tax Classification Use for agricultural land. So the Planning Board had reviewed that at an earlier meeting, I think that July meeting, and made a recommendation to the Select Board regarding the town's right of first refusal on the property. So last night, the Select Board was considering that notice and discussing whether they were interested in exercising the town's right of first refusal on that property. So they actually continued the hearing, there was a little bit of discussion. You know, I clarified the memo that the Planning Board had sent or just reminded the Select Board members about the Planning Board's recommendation. And there was a member of the Open Space Committee who spoke about the process related to consideration of the town's right of first refusal, so the Select Board wanted to get a little more information and so they continued the hearing to their September meeting, which I think is I'm not actually sure, I think it's not till the 24th, I think it's at the end of September.
Okay.
So that was, other than that, there were liquor licenses and some business licenses and I didn't stay for all of the meeting, but I don't think there was any other substantive discussion.
Very good. Conservation met last night. There was, there was only one thing on the agenda that really pertain to us, it was the Sunset Club at Two Old Point. They intend to, they did not the tolling did not pass legislation, so they intend to submit a new NOA and they had the MLLM engineering, they had some problems, health problems and so they did not have that prepared in time and submitted, so they're going to continue to the next meeting and that's the only update I have in conservation, so. Next thing on the agenda. Planner's Director, Planning Director's Report.
Thanks, Woody. Let's see, what's the news? So the town clerk and the town received notice from the Attorney General that the Multifamily, MVTA, Multifamily Overlay District Bylaw that town meeting passed and the annual town meeting on April was approved, so so that is the green light from the Attorney General, which is required within the 90 days after town meeting. The, so that bylaw is in the books and official. Um, the, so that bylaw is in the books and uh official. Um, the uh review of the bylaw for compliance by the Housing and Livable Communities um Agency of the state is still underway. Um, they are prioritizing review of um towns that are required to be compliant by December twenty twenty four. Newbury, as you remember, was in the category of required to be compliant by December twenty twenty five. So we haven't heard from the um H L C about their review of the bylaw yet. But wanted to share the attorney general um letter. Um, a couple grants related updates. Um, we are uh partnering in a regional grant with that Merrimack Valley Planning Mission is putting in regarding um it's the Safe Streets for All program. Um, that we've heard a little about the Vision Zero um project, which is looking at uh crash data and analyzing um locations across the region where there are safety concerns for all users, whether it's car accidents, pedestrian, bike accidents. So that project, um, that plan is finishing up this month and I think will be available for public comment um at the next uh Metropolitan Planning Organization um Transportation Meeting, which is next week. So as soon as that's available for public comment, I'll, I'll share that around. Um, and I think I'll put a news release on the website as well for the community. Um, but anyway, now that the plan is being finalized, the town is eligible for grants for demonstration projects. So the location that we've worked on with Merrimack Valley um Planning Commission is the intersection of Elm Street and School Street. Um, so this grant will be going in uh being submitted in the next couple of weeks. Um, and we'll know uh probably at some point in the winter whether um that's been funded or not, the grant would be to uh it's, as I said, a demonstration grant, so it's um basically doing an engineering assessment of strategies to make safety improvements and then actually implementing on the ground in that temporary way, so it's not new concrete sidewalks, but it's mobility mats or um bollards, um different kinds of um crosswalks or solar lighting, different strategies for that intersection to make it safer. So it's pretty, it's a pretty cool project. I'm really thrilled that Newbury was chosen among the towns to be a part of this regional demonstration grant, so. Um, and they're pretty confident, it's federal um highway money, so they're pretty confident that the region will get funded, so. Um, let's see, um, I wanted to mention the border to Boston um has some activity. Board of Austin Trail, uh, the segment between Byfield and Georgetown, which has been um in the planning works for a long time, as you, I think, most of you recall, but the Mass D O T has hired a um wetland surveyor to get out into that segment and update the wetlands delineation that was done prior to COVID and is outdated. So um, so it's just good that that is moving forward. Um, I've met with a new planner in Georgetown and there, they have an active citizen group, um, you know, working on advocating for that as well, so I'll keep people posted um on that. Let's see, um, and just a couple of events I wanted to mention. Um, there's two really good, Storm Surge is partnering with the Newbury Port Climate Resiliency Committee to um bring two speakers um to the area coming up. One is uh coming up on September fifth. And the title of the um, the uh speaker is talking on the topic of why community is critical for climate resiliency. So meaning social structures of community and how that um plays a role in um preparing communities for climate um impacts. So that should be good, that's September fifth, seven P M at the Senior Center in Newburyport. And then their October meeting, which um I don't think is on their calendar yet, um is going to be focused more on at the homeowner level, like what are some resources and strategies for you know, each individual property owner to take on their own property, their home, their yard, their um spaces to uh have their property be more resilient, so. Those are two really good ones. Um, housing related, just briefly, um, I attended a regional um housing for all summer social uh last week, it was held in Ipswich and it had um representatives from all the coalitions throughout the North Shore who are working on housing issues, um housing um equity and housing affordability. Um, and it was, it was just really cool to be in a room um with all different towns who are, you know, sharing concern about the price of housing and the availability of housing. Um, and Lieutenant uh Kim Driscoll was the speaker at that and she was, she was great. So that was cool. And then last thing, um Aimed Ferry on September eighteenth is hosting with Newburyport a um another uh housing uh event called Strong Towns. And my understanding is it's a uh uh na- national advocacy, not advocacy, but um planning group that really focuses on how to build uh strong communities and looking at the history of um suburban development in particular and how to sort of reshape the direction our housing is going in order to provide more availability and affordability. So September eighteenth for that one. And let's see. Yeah, um finally, just, we did receive five different um proposals for the Plum Island Turnpike Resiliency project and um the review team is, will be um interviewing, having the teams from those engineering firms come in person. Um, we're hoping to have a firm hired by um the middle of September. That's it.
Very good, thank you, Kristen.
Hey, Woody?
Yes.
Could I just throw one, one question? Hey, um, Kristen, did we want to talk about uh M V P C and their request um um that the town planner actually be the M V P C uh representative and voting member? And that the, the planning board member would then become the alternate member, and I was very accommodating to that, and I think that makes perfect sense. So I don't know if you wanted to bring that up in your planners' report. So going forward, that would make the M V P C report would be, uh, you'd be the M V P C liaison. Do, would we need a motion for that too, to make that transition?
Um, yeah, thank you, Pete, um for remembering to bring that up. Um, uh, yes, I believe it would be good to have a vote for that. Um, if the board is, you know, open to that, as I think you all recall, Martha was the um representative and I, my sense from Merrimack Valley Planning is that, you know, works pretty well um to have the planning director uh be representative, so. Um, so I'm certainly open to playing that role if that's, if that works for the planning board.
Frankly, I thought we already voted you as the uh commissioner.
Um, we have voted Pete.
Oh.
So we can change hats very nicely, Larry, and I'm, I'm okay with that. And if you'd like to make a motion, I'd be happy to second it.
All right, um. And, and so, would, would the motion be that uh uh the Kristen Grubbs be appointed, recommend to the select board that Kristen be appointed the uh M V P C Commissioner from Newbury?
Town Planner.
Town Planner. Be appointed the M V P C Commissioner from Newbury. Did I get that right?
That sounds good.
Second?
I'd be happy to second that.
Okay, roll call vote. Uh, Pete?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Scott?
Whoa, yes.
Steve, how do you feel?
I'm not going to debate it, so I'll be.
Okay. And I'd say yes as well. Congratulations, Kristen.
Great. Yeah, I'm happy to, I'm happy to. It's a lot of the, um, we work with them so closely, so it'll, it'll be a good and I'll share anything relevant as soon as I hear it.
No, it makes perfect sense.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of synergy there and I know um Healy recently signed um some legislation relating to um um the accessory dwelling units in the Commonwealth. Um, I'm not sure if this would be, you know, a platform or your report. Um, it would be a a nice way to update or keep us abreast of, you know, something um that uh, you know, could be important to the town. Um, but it, it's pretty interesting.
Yeah, I I may have mentioned it briefly at the last meeting, um, but it is um a component of the Affordable Homes Act that has the um requirement that communities allow accessory dwelling units by right. Um, Newbury is in the position of having had an accessory dwelling unit um on the books, unlike a lot of towns in Massachusetts, but um the key now is to look at what we have, look at what the new legislation is. Um, and that's, that's been started by town council and there's a lot of um discussion at the zoning enforcement officer level. Um, previously, the Z B A has been the permitting authority for accessory dwelling units. So I know the Z B A members are, you know, attending trainings and reading the three hundred page legislation and um there's a, there's a lot of good activity and a lot of work to do to figure out exactly how each town now implements the new legislation.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
For me, while you're on, you mentioned um people from various towns getting together and talking about, you know, housing production, affordability, you know, that you, that laundry list of concerns when it comes to housing. And I'm I may be repeating myself, but wondering, do people get around to talking about short term rentals as being, in my opinion, a big part of the problem about housing availability and the price of housing?
Um, yes, it, it's, it's definitely, you're, I, I think that's a very good point that you're making that it, it is, has being demonstrated that the transition of smaller units into short term rentals has really taken longer term rentals off the market and it is a cause of a lot of the um shortage. I haven't seen any, you know, I'd be interested to see if there's data on that yet, but it's certainly something that um planning, you know, planning staff, planning boards are looking at. Um, are, are there ways to regulate short term rentals that would help alleviate the, the problem that can bring? Um, certainly, Newbury Port just passed regulations this past year. Um, so and I don't know if you've been watching that, Steve, but I know there are different different regulations on Plum Island and in other parts of the town, um, and it's a pretty complicated um issue for, yeah.
Right, well, one could spend a lot of time doing a study to determine that that's, that it's part of the problem. Whereas the old scientist in me would say, by inspection, short term rentals are a problem. We don't need to do a major study, it'll take eighteen months. But we're really go with it after arm waving about how the, it's obviously a problem. So I could, trying to identify what specific things would need to be done to address the problem. And is it legislation? Is it, in which case, what legislation? But, you know, trying to jump ahead to identifying what needs to be done and try to make it be done. Without delaying things with a study.
Yeah.
Longer study.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree. And it, it's towns are taking action, so we can, you know, that's a good place to start as well. It's just to see like how, how are the people who are a little bit ahead of Newbury, um, how's it working? So definitely, um, you know, I think bylaw, sort of special special work bylaw review and research and recommendations is a category of um work that when we get two people in the planning office again and, you know, maybe future interns, like there's, it's, it's a really good kind of project to just kind of dive right into. And in fact, it's something Martha and I talked about in her um role as sort of special projects planner, if that might be one area important to look at, so um. I don't know, maybe, maybe we can have a workshop with the board at a later date as Martha gets into her um review of the zoning bylaw and the recodification to kind of look at some of the special, special sections um and dive into that a little more. So it's a pretty, it's an important topic and it's a complex one, so it would probably merit some deeper conversation.
Sure, and I'm still new to the planning board, obviously, but you said also the magic word workshop. And it occurs to me, there may be some things that we need to revisit and talk about, whether it be, you know, what is Martha's role? Uh, what is Joe Swartek's role? Which I still don't fully understand and some other issues about way, about how the planning board as elected officials, or in my case, appointed, you know, interact with the director of planning and, you know, what are the roles and responsibilities? And maybe that would be a fruitful conversation for us all to be on the same page. With that, I'm done.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Woody.
Um, there's nothing else in the players' directors' report, which I think Kristen said she was done, and then we had a few more topics. Um, we'll move on to meeting minutes. Uh, we need to approve, approval of the um August seventh, twenty twenty four meeting minutes. Um, has everyone had a chance to read the minutes from the last meeting?
Um, I, I have, Woody, and I, I have one question and one comment, if I may.
Go right ahead, Larry.
The, the version I have uh does not include the link uh to the video recording. Has that been added, Kristen?
Um, yes, thank you, Larry, for pointing that out. Um, I did, I think when I first sent it to the board, it hadn't been um uploaded yet. So I will make sure that the version we're approving has that link live.
And the comment is, if you haven't already done so, under the me, the materials reviewed at the meeting, we've got the three Newbury Port Turnpike um uh information, but I'd also add the golf center as built plan because we did take that up at the meeting.
Yes, I will add that. Thanks.
Other than that, it looks fine to me.
Anyone else having uh comments on the meeting minutes? Hearing none. Um, an entertaining motion to accept the meeting minutes for August seventh, twenty twenty four with the revisions that Larry just stated.
You have a motion.
Second?
Second.
A second.
Very good. Uh, roll call vote. Peter?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Uh, Scott?
Yes.
And Steve, how do you feel?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so meeting minutes are approved. Um, Larry, do you have an update on approval of past minutes?
Uh, yeah, just uh very briefly, Woody. Um, I'm sure you all recall it, at the height of COVID, we did get behind on uh, on our meeting minutes and I've been working um along, first with Martha and Kristen and now with Kristen to ki- kind of bring those up to date. I think you recall you've authorized me as uh to approve them once they're in appropriate satisfactory form. And I'm glad to report that we have twenty twenty two completed, so. And Kristen and I uh working diligently to uh catch up with twenty twenty one. And uh we'll hope to have that wrapped up in the very near future.
Very good.
Thanks, Larry.
Yes, thank you, Larry. That's, I'm sure it's a lot of work.
Lot of O T, Larry.
Yeah, but.
Thank you.
Needs to be done and we can handle it. All right, Kristen?
Absolutely. Your help is instrumental, for sure.
All right, now, uh, seeing nothing else on the agenda, um.
Absolutely, could I jump in? I, I think. I, I think it was one item that got passed over, that's the uh, in- introduction to the remote meeting.
Uh, the preamble of the meeting, yes. Um. Kristen, do you still have that? I, I, we, I did pass over that, that was um. Oh. I was wondering if we could shorten that up a bit, and uh. She, Kristen checked with town council. And they edited some things that we. Can get rid of it in the preamble, and then the rest of it was pretty much up to me, I haven't had a chance to. Edit anymore of it, so I was, I kind of passed up on that on purpose, but we can have a discussion about it if you wish. Um.
Yeah, I, I'm just, just, sorry, it's not coming up, Woody, but I wonder if um, what might be good is to edit it and then um. Get, share it around, um.
If, if that's alright with the board, we'll bring this up at a later date, I. The, what we have now is about six or seven minutes long, and it'd be nice to shorten it up a bit, if we can.
I agree, hundred percent.
Our town councils. And um, thank you for um. Um, addressing it, uh, but I think that's a great idea, Kristen, um, you know, if you want to take a stab at. At uh, making some uh, changes to the um, or creating a draft, passing around, and uh, and we could probably comment.
Very good, so we'll take that up and. I'll go ahead.
I'm sorry, uh, because I, when I saw town council's notes, it sounded like she was agreeable to having. Much of it deleted and much of it remained, but I thought it was a good. Document to move forth on, and I guess pass it on to you, Woody, and Kristen, and then pass it around to us. But I was pleased that she was willing to delete some items.
Yep. Yeah, it would be great to shorten it up a bit. Alright, so we'll take that up in a, uh, either the next meeting or in the future. I, um, seeing nothing else on the agenda now, um. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, before that, uh, I, I would like to say, um, you know, very nice job, Woody, um. I think this is your first one, uh, so uh, great job, appreciate it.
Alright, well, I'll, I'll try to do my best this job.
I will make the motion.
Does that a motion as well, Scott?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Very good, Larry, um. Roll, roll call vote? Um, Pete?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Uh, Scott?
Yes.
And Steve, how do you feel?
Yes.
And I say yes as well, and good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good job.